This conference will now be recorded.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Before we get too far into the meeting, I do want to give a heads up to everyone in the audience and online that under Agenda Item Number Four, two of the projects have been removed from the agenda upon request of the applicant. That's Tillman Holdings LLC Coordinated Development Phase One and Letter C, which is 81 and 111 South Cedar Crest Boulevard. Those two projects have been removed. Welcome to the August 8, 2024 South Whitehall Township Planning Commission Meeting. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the pride of the United States of America, to the power of our states, one nation under God, indivisible, and just as it is.
Mr. Petrucci, would you do the roll call?
Yes. Trevor Dombach.
Here.
Tim Dugan.
Here.
Todd Farringer.
Here.
Brian Hype. Diane Kelly.
Here.
Mark Luth. And David Wilson.
Here. Also in attendance, township staff and consultants, Tom Petrucci, Township Manager, Jennifer Aldifer, Township Solicitor with Sader Law, Erin Bet, Township Engineer with the Pidcock Company, Lynn Labarre, South Whitehall Township Note Taker, Rob Fainall with South Whitehall Township. He'll be doing the IT. And Laura Harrier, Zoning Officer with South Whitehall Township.
And for the record, we have five members of the Planning Commission in attendance. Therefore, we have a quorum.
All right. Mr. Petrucci, would you like to do the meeting rules?
Meeting rules are as follows. For an orderly meeting wherein all attendees may be able to fully participate, we ask that you adhere to the following rules. In order that both in-person and remote attendees may hear all comments or questions, all in-person attendees will be required to use microphones at all times. We request that remote attendees, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid background noise that may cause interference during the meeting and may make it difficult for others to hear. Staff may mute the microphones of remote attendees if needed. Public questions and comments will be taken at periodic intervals throughout the agenda. We will start with no time limits, but the Planning Commission Chairman may impose a time limitation if there are many questions or if the meeting is running short on time. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized and move to the podium when directed. Turn the podium microphone on and state your name, address, and comment or question. Please turn the podium microphone off when finished. For remote attendees, the chat box features will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. When you are recognized and so directed, please unmute your microphone and state your comment or question. Please mute your microphone when finished. For those who are accessing the meeting by phone only, staff will periodically ask for caller comments and unmute any callers. Callers must identify their name and address prior to making a comment. Your cooperation in adhering to the rules will ensure an orderly and respectful meeting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We're on Agenda Item Number Three, Approval of Minutes, the minutes from the June 13, 2024 meeting. Does anyone on the Planning Commission have any comments, edits for the meeting minutes? None here. Any online? Nope. All right. Does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
There's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Meeting minutes are approved. All right. We're on Agenda Item Number Four, Subdivision Review. Agenda Item 4A was removed from the agenda, so we're on Agenda Item 4B, which is the Parkland High School Expansion. Before we get into the staff presentation, is there anyone in the audience or online that is attending that has particular interest in this project? Other than the applicant, sorry. That looks like a no, so we'll move forward with the staff presentation.
Thank you. So before the Planning Commission this evening is an application to further develop the property located at 2700 North Cedar Crest Boulevard. The plan proposes four building expansions totaling 46,274 square feet to the existing Parkland High School on the 112.6 acre parcel. The property is served by public water in its own rural residential RR2. Parkland School District is the owner and applicant. For reference, the Parkland High School was constructed on a 112.6 acre parcel in 1999. Various additions to the recreational facilities and maintenance-related structures have been completed since then. Included within the packet are various engineering and consultant review letters, including the Township Engineer, Township Water and Sewer Engineer, Township Geotechnical Consultant, Public Works Department, Public Safety Committee, the Landscape and Shade Tree Commission, Parks Rec Board, Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, Conservation District, and Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. Those have not been received at this time. The township's comments themselves are contained in Christopher Stroller's review letter dated August 2, 2024. Comments pertain to consistency with the comprehensive plan. The comments of the South Whitehall Township Zoning Officer are contained in Laura Harrier's review dated August 2, 2024. She has no comments at this time. The community development department recommendation is as follows. So pertinent sections of the South Whitehall subdivision and land development ordinance provide guidance for the Planning Commission regarding sketch plans. So a sketch plan is designed to offer the applicant an opportunity to informally discuss their plans for a proposed major plan with the Township Planning Commission and Township Engineer. The plan will be reviewed for general scope and layout, for conformity with applicable township requirements, and the Township Comprehensive Plan, and for conditions which might affect the implementation of this subdivision. So to clarify, the providing of an opinion regarding a sketch plan by the Township Planning Commission shall not constitute preliminary approval of a plan, but rather an expression of the Planning Commission's opinion of the layout submitted to be used as a guide to the preparation of the preliminary plan. Such an opinion does not authorize the installation of any improvements, nor the selling or transfer of any lots, nor the leasing or renting of any space. The official time period for decision-making does not begin with the submission of a sketch plan. So in other words, there's no deadline to act on the plan for the Planning Commission, and the comments are not binding. So overall, the department recommends that the applicant utilize the comments of the reviewing agencies and township staff and those of the Planning Commission members to assist in the preparation of the preliminary plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bet, would you like to do the Township Engineer presentation?
Sure. In addition to the building expansions mentioned, we also note that there's bus parking and passenger parking as well. In our July 31, 2024 memo to the township, our comments have been provided to assist with the preparation of a preliminary final plan submission to address items such as stormwater management, coordination with PennDOT, and sketch plan drafting requirements. We know that frontage improvements such as right-of-way dedication, cartonway widening, curb, sidewalk, monuments, and street trees are required along Cedar Crest Boulevard, Ritter Road, and Orfield Road. The improvements for Cedar Crest Boulevard and Orfield Road should ultimately be coordinated with and permitted by PennDOT. We note that frontage improvements were waived as part of the original development, but would be required as part of this application. The proposed parking area at the southern portion of the improvements is in close proximity to the campus driveway. We recommend its location and consider future intersection widening and the extension of the campus pathway. Since this is a sketch plan, a more detailed engineering review will be provided once preliminary final plans have been submitted.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to do their presentation now? And if you could just state your name for the record as well?
You need to turn that on. Sorry, are you on? My name is Laura Eberly. I'm with Ruthur Bowen Engineering. I am the Civil Site Designer for the Parkland High School project. I do have several representatives from the Architect's Office and the School District with me here tonight, so between all of us, we should be able to answer any questions that you do have. As mentioned in the township comments and by the Township Engineer, we are proposing four different expansions to the Parkland High School building. An expansion to the athletic entrance, which is on the left side as you approach the front entrance to the school. We do have a small expansion to the cafeteria, which is sort of out the backside of where the athletic entrance is. And then we have two really classroom educational space expansions towards the rear of the school. They're sort of in the pie-shaped areas at the back of the school that are now grass and provide entrances to the school from the rear. In addition, as mentioned by the Township Engineer, we are having an expansion to the bus loop at the back. We are providing nine additional bus spaces to help with the flow of traffic during pickup and drop-off times with the busing. We are extending the bus loop over an existing parking lot. And in order to compensate for the loss of those parking spaces, we are proposing a parking lot to the south of the existing parking lot out at the front of the school area. With those improvements, we do acknowledge that we will have to do stormwater management on the site, and we are looking at infiltration testing and possibly some other types of stormwater management on the site. We recognize that we're going to have to get DEP permitting, township permitting for the stormwater on the site. In addition to that, we do anticipate serving the expansions to the building through connections, water and sewer connections through the existing building. We obviously will provide that information to the township once we have those detailed out and make sure that we've gotten appropriate approvals and anything necessary for those connections. At that point, we can answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Do any Planning Commission members have any questions?
So one thing I've heard in the community was that there's also talk of a new sport facility, like a new stadium included with this project?
At the moment, it is not included with this project. I think the plans for that are still sort of up in the air and being discussed with the school district. I don't know if Arthur Oaks wants to comment on that, but at this time, only what we have shown on the sketch plan is proposed for this.
Potentially a phased approach.
That's correct. It's really about the funding issue for bringing that stadium down there. If we did bring the stadium down, it would be on the left side where the practice fields are currently. When you come in the driveway, trying to put it down there towards Ritter Road. But it's really about the funding mechanism to afford it.
Thank you. Any other questions? I have a question. I guess, what was the trigger for these proposed expansions? Is it more students?
Yeah, so again, it's really about our enrollment increasing. Currently in that high school, we have about 3,200 students. As we look at a moderate projection, we go out to in 2030, 3,900, about 3,950, so 3,946 is what we're looking at. So this building, and certainly Jamie with the architect, Alec Five, she can answer the questions. It's to build for about 4,000 students total is what we're looking to bring that high school to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The proposed building expansions that are in the pie-shaped grass areas at the back of the building, they will be two-story expansions to match the existing school building.
Yeah, I was gonna ask. I assume that they're all matching the same.
Correct.
The existing building. Any projections with the traffic control as it impacts out to Orfield Road and Cedar Crest? I know that'll be a PennDOT issue.
Right. We are having a traffic study done, assuming the increase in students with additional buses. So that will definitely be part of our preliminary plan submission to the township. And we will obviously have to coordinate with PennDOT and see what kind of improvements will be required at both Cedar Crest Boulevard and Orfield Road.
Just a few comments. As I'm sure you'll be aware, may need to look into, you know, Waterwell Services sewage planning. I know the school has its own treatment plant, but you may need to go through DEP, you know, for additional EDUs.
You know, just FYI, future stuff, we're actually going to be coming to you soon for that expansion of the sewer plant as well. So it won't be long behind there. It's very similar timeline.
Okay.
Is the public water piped into the site or is it a local South Whitehall Township water supply? You know?
Yeah.
Yeah, you brought it up here.
Yeah, I pulled up the GIS. It's the local. Question again on the stadium. So if you're building it in phases and you build this expansion now and you account for the stormwater at this time, would you have sufficient flexibility or space on the site to then account for the stormwater on the stadium later?
Yeah, I think what we were proposing to do right now is to deal with the stormwater from the proposed expansions, the building and the parking right now. But we definitely are in discussions as to how we would deal with the stormwater if the stadium were to come to this site. So obviously, we're going to have to make sure that we have the space and the appropriate location to deal with the stormwater that would come from a stadium relocation.
Are you looking at, based on the sketch plan, would it be an underground stormwater control facility under that new parking lot?
It's possible. I mean, we've gotten some early indications that infiltration might not work on the site. So we're going to have to look at some alternative stormwater management facilities. So we're going to look back at the original design. There's a very large existing detention basin on the site. So we're going to go back and look at the original calculations and see if there's any room in that basin that we might be able to improve that basin and make use of it. We'll have to look at maybe some other volume control best management practices. So it really depends. We're working with our geotechnical consultant right now to see what's possible on the site.
It does look like there's a lot of green space still. I mean, the max allowable impervious coverage is 75%. Then at least with these expansions, you know, the proposed, the existing is 28, and it only goes up to 29%.
Now, that's, it's a little bit misleading because that does count most of the athletic fields as green space. So they're not really, like, if you were go to a spray irrigation system or an infiltration system, you don't really want to place that on a sports field because it's sort of a contrary purpose to what the school district wants to do with those fields.
All right. Does anyone have any questions?
Are you anticipating any waivers requests or barriers?
At the moment, I don't think so. We'll have to see as we get further into the detailed design of this, but at the moment, I don't think we're going to need any waivers.
All right. There's no one in, no residents in the audience. Is there anyone online that may have any questions?
I just have one quick question. So you're anticipating 3,900 students. How much staff are you anticipating with that as well, as far as for those 3,900 students on top of that?
That's a, that's a hard one to answer, just because of what is the needs of the students at the time when they come in. Obviously, it's additional staff. We're putting in somewhere in the neighborhood of around 20 more classrooms with these additions. So obviously, you need to bring in some staff, but we currently have about 70 teachers that share classrooms now. So it's not a one-for-one classroom to personnel, but there is going to be some increase. It's just a matter of how much. And it also matters, this is a projection of enrollment. This actually helps the building now in a big, big way, and it depends on how fast this enrollment happens.
Just out of curiosity, not really related to the sketch plan, but, you know, the building's 25 years old now. So is the school district looking at some functional improvements?
Yes.
Tied to this? Yeah.
Yeah, some of the HVAC equipment, the boilers, all of that is part of the whole assessment.
Time point, yeah, start upgrading.
Correct.
Just to follow up on the staff comment, we did have to make a projection as to the number of staff members and the number of administrative personnel as part of our parking calculation because that's how the zoning ordinance reads. So right now, we're assuming that there are going to be 314 staff members plus 39, there's 39 administrative offices, and then it goes on to do a calculation based on the number of classrooms as well.
Thank you.
With the facade, are you kind of blending it with the existing structure or anything?
The intent is to make it look like it's always been there. Not change it at all. Obviously, a little more glass than the previous design, but really to make it look like it's always been.
Wasn't it in the original design, like, the building was kind of laid out in a way that it could encompass additions over time if the need was there?
It was. It's really, you know, quite a historic type of architecture. So it was always intended that you could fill that in, whatever level. And the blend that Alec Five came up with, when you see it rendering in, looks like it's always been there, and it should have been there, is what it looks like.
Are there any renderings available?
I do have some with us if you would like to see them. But we, if you've seen the Parkland newsletter that came out the past two months, the very first image is a rendering of what the end image looked like. But we do have additional.
And on. Been looking.
I should just mention as well that athletic entrance, that's going to be as an alternate. So we're not sure that the funding is there for that. That's a nice to have, not a need to have.
Just for clarity's sake, with like the classroom expansions or any of these being two stories, the total square footage, that's for Level One and Level Two combined, not earth disturbance?
I think the total square footage that's on the sketch plan is just footprint. So it would be impervious cover that we would have to deal with in stormwater management. So yeah, it's just the footprint. It doesn't include the two-story square footage.
Okay.
Those square footages are about 73,000 square feet for the two stories.
Yeah. So this is an image that's been out to the public.
Because we have a Planning Commission online, I think you need to be closer to the microphone so that she can hear everything you're saying.
Sorry. So if anyone has seen the Parkland newsletter, this is one of the images that's right on the front page. That's been, I think, consistent for the past two issues. This first image, though, is a site, this image is a site plan that we've been using in a lot of our public presentations of what the site would look like, which is a reflection of what the sketch plan was submitted to. We can go back to the next one again. So you can see this is at the back of the building, basically from the vantage of the bus loop looking towards Cedar Crest essentially. So just to play it up with newspaper print, we have the new additions in color and everything else is kind of grayed out, but you can see how those two new additions fit into those pie shapes in between the existing wings. You know, we have the exterior face along the bus loop to be linear, very similar to the other wings, but inside these courtyards we're creating to be educational use, we are playing into the curves that already exist within the language of the building. You can see kind of a little piece, the possible athletics lobby. You'll see another image of that soon, but that's kind of be very similar to the existing entrances at the academics, the arts, and the cafeteria. And this other smaller piece is a cafeteria expansion, which actually encompasses a footprint of a patio that exists right now. There's some outdoor seating right there right now, so it was a, it's a good spot to take over for additional indoor seating. And the next one. So this is our proposal for the new athletics entrance. So you can see that it really does speak exactly to the language of what's outside right now. We didn't want to change it much and make something very different because the school itself already has a very dominant language to it. So because of the grading along the front of the building there, there might be a couple of steps up into the new entrance, but we are able to connect to an existing lobby, so it will be completely accessible for wheelchair access and take you right back into the cafeteria space. I think there was one more image. And these are floor plans, but we don't need to look at those. So you can go back to the next one. So that's all.
Thank you.
Just have one more, one more question. You mentioned a 3,900 student projection by 2030, and it's a little off-topic, but how does that affect the other elementary and middle schools? Do you access supplemental projects?
Middle schools, certainly.
Down the.
Actually, as we're working through the high school, which is the first one to come before you, the middle schools are, the middle school is next. So whether we do something at Orfield, which is an expansion, and that's part of where the maybe stadium moves and transportation has to move off of that site. So that's the whole master plan of Division 2030 that's been presented. So yeah, it has to, something has to happen in the middle school level as well. We won't be seeing you for too long. We'll be right back here doing the same thing.
Thank you.
And just to answer your question as far as the elementaries, we believe with veterans and with this work that was done at the south end of the district, we've handled the elementaries. Now it's time to take care of the secondary schools.
Thank you. Any other questions?
This is Diane Kelly. I just wanted to ask if the applicant would speak to the parking that would need to be increased for the, both the staff and the students' increase in enrollment with this plan?
So as part of the sketch plan, we did do a calculation. As I mentioned, we did estimate the number of additional faculty and administrative personnel. And then we did calculate based on the number of additional classrooms that are proposed. So that calculation was included on the sketch plan. So we believe that the required number of spaces is 1,291. And with the change to the parking that we're proposing, both the loss of the parking at the bus loop and the brand-new parking lot to the south of the existing parking, we will end up with 1,319 spaces. So we will have an excess of spaces beyond what we're required to have.
Very good. Thank you.
Sure. All right. I'll check for the audience. If there's anyone in the audience online. Seems to be a no. No additional questions in the audience in person. All right. So this is a sketch plan, so we're not making any votes. All our comments are non-binding. They're just suggestions. I understand there may be many changes through the process. So thank you for presenting the sketch and introducing the project. Thank you for the renderings. Pictures are worth a thousand words, so it's nice to see those, the visual renderings.
Thank you very much.
All right. We're on Agenda Item Number Five, Comprehensive Plan Update.
So I can update the Planning Commission on the South Whitehall Landscapes Plan. So in June 2023, the Community Development Department kicked off the South Whitehall Landscapes Plan, which is an open space historic agricultural and natural resource preservation plan. Over the second half of 2023, the project team held five public workshop meetings, conducted multiple surveys, and interviewed numerous experts in the field of agricultural natural resource conservation and historic preservation. Over the past several months, staff and their consultants have summarized the data collected and prepared subsequent goals for each resource identified in the plan, agricultural resources, natural resources, historic resources, and open space. So specific actions are proposed to achieve those goals, which were summarized in the final. which were summarized in the Final Action Plan chapter. The chapter lays out actions in the following categories: planning and programs, policy and regulations, outreach and education. So some highlights of the plan include zoning considerations to encourage various scales of agriculture, recommendations for additional resource protection ordinances, a suggested process for classifying local historic resources, details on nine distinct categories of open space in the township, and recommended strategies for preserving different types of open space. At the July 17, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting, Community Development Department staff discussed releasing the draft South Whitehall Landscapes Plan for review and comments from appropriate boards, commissions, councils, including the Township Planning Commission. Staff is currently collecting comments and welcomes any questions from commission members. At last night's Board of Commissioners meeting, it was, the plan was reviewed again and formally released for the two-week public comment period. At the August 21 Board of Commissioners meeting, we will again have a public comment check-in with the Board of Commissioners, and then a motion will be requested to send the plan to the South Whitehall Township EAC for formal comments. And then at the August 26 EAC meeting, we will seek final comments from the from the EAC and then a recommendation for the South Whitehall Township Planning Commission to review. At the September 4 Board of Commissioners meeting, the commissioners will review the final plan, and then a motion will be requested to send the plan to the planning commission for review. So the tentative schedule is to have this September 12 Planning Commission meeting. You would then review the final plan and recommend the plan for adoption. And then the plan would be adopted at the September 18 Board of Commissioners meeting. Any questions?
How many comments or how much feedback have you received so far?
We have we have not received any comments or feedback at this point. So we're going to push to make sure that the plan is is visible using our various platforms, including social media, Nixol, and so forth.
I would recommend, you know, for the record, we sort of, we discuss the extent that we town, the township has reached out to the public because a lot of times what happens is residents say they weren't notified and they weren't aware. So I would like to, you know, staff to show that there has been effort and get it on the record. Certainly are questions in the future in terms of residents thinking we did not try to provide public outreach.
Certainly, we can do that.
Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to agenda item number eight, transportation infrastructure update.
Sure. The four-year tip is moving along for projects in the township and their funding, such as Tillman Interchange and 309 Betterment Project set to be implemented on October 1. And LVPC is continuing to look at bringing passenger rail back to the Lehigh Valley. A meeting regarding this was held in the last month. That's all I have.
Thank you. Courtesy of the floor. There is no one currently present physically in the audience. I'll check again online. There is no one present online. All right, agenda item number 10, adjournment.
I'll make a motion to.
I'll second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none opposed, so moved.